I'd like to call this meeting to order if you would all, um, if you would all sit, listen to the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. I apologize for the wait, waiting that you've had, but we're having a few technical difficulties here. But we will go on with the roll call. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Bussinow?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Trustee, trustee.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue? Treasurer Goodhue? Clerk Posey here.
I know Karen's here. Did she respond?
No. Supervisor Dunn?
Here.
Currently, all members are present except for Karen, Treasurer Goodhue.
I'll walk over to her office. I'm right close.
All right. Ms. Goodhue, are you present?
You say hello, but don't respond. Okay. Brian, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Nancy, is there a way you could maybe assist Karen?
Um, what is, what is her phone number? What's the last four digits?
Uh, you mean a-
Anybody know? Cause she's not showing up in the, in the list here as a, if she's showing up as a phone number. The, the number that she called in on.
Oh, I don't know. Let me ask.
Sure.
Hello, this is Karen. Hi, Karen.
I can hear you, Karen. Okay, she's on.
Okay.
Okay, all members are present.
Thank you. Um, the approval of agenda items is next, and I know that we have a regular and a closed session item. Is that correct?
Yes, we have a proposed add-on under new business, item number fourteen, McComb Corner Park concessions, and a proposed add-on under closed session, item number fifteen, discussion regarding written legal opinion, closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight, subsection H.
Thank you. Madam Chair, this is Trustee Bussinow. As the board was aware, I was going to request an agenda item tonight, too. I outlined that in an email to the board on Monday. Yesterday, I, um, on township letter had via email requested that add-on agenda, and I was directed to read that at this point in the meeting via Mr. Cartamon. So, my add-on agenda that I let the board aware on Monday was discussion and vote to hire an independent IP consulting firm to perform an audit related to the events and reports of the unauthorized computer program that was installed on the workstation of the township clerk and report their findings back to the board.
Is that what you want added?
Correct.
Madam Chair, that would be, if that was approved, you would put it at fourteen A under trustee.
All right. Fourteen A.
Anyone else? Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda items with the corrections.
Actually, they're just additions, not corrections.
Okay. Motion by-
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support by Nevers.
Support by Ms. Nevers to approve the agenda as amended. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver? Did we lose Charlie?
Yep.
Are you there? Okay. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Thank you. That passed. Next, we have the approval of the bills. As usual, there's two bill runs. If you want an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, I, this is Karen Goodhue. I'd like check number one zero seven zero seven zero for fully Mansfield in the amount of two thousand forty-two dollars and fifty cents to be voted on separately from the rest of the bill runs, please.
Would you, um, anyone want to make a motion about the bill run?
I'll make a motion that we approve the bill run with check number one zero seven zero, seven zero, uh, to be voted on separately.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support by Nevers.
Order by Ms. Nevers to approve the bill run other than the one item Ms. Goodhue wants to consider separately. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
No.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a statement, please?
It's highly irregular. Can it wait till you-
Well, usually, there's a discussion on the motion.
I'll, I'll just, I'll, I'll address it later. Okay. Next, we have approval of the previous meeting minutes, those being from May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Madam Chair, the, the meeting minutes are from June tenth, two thousand twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
And I will make a motion that we approve as presented.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support by Nevers.
Reported by-
Trustee Smith.
Oh, Kathy Smith. Thank you. Okay. Sorry. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you. We will have the consent agenda items. These are routine matters that come before the board on a regular basis, but if you wish to discuss an item, please indicate so at this time. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Nope, that's all right. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Clerk Posey, support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to approve the consent. Would you call the roll?
Yes. Clerk, um, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will have the consent agenda items. These are routine matters that come before the board on a regular basis, but if you wish to discuss an item, please indicate so at this time. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Nope, that's all right. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Clerk Posey, support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to approve the consent. Would you call the roll?
Yes. Clerk, um, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, no. Supervisor Dunn?
No. I believe that motion carries.
Yes.
Ms. Posey, if we put it on the, uh, on the agenda, where would you like it?
Uh, Ms. Goodhue, are you just looking for a vote on the bill separately or a discussion?
Uh, a vote on it separately, please.
Madam Chair, you can call for a separate vote on that bill at this point.
Okay. So, we're gonna put it where?
You can just add, uh, right now, ask, uh, I'll make a motion to pay the fully Mansfield bill, number one zero seven zero seven zero.
Okay. And it will be number what on the agenda?
Uh, you don't have to put it as an agenda item. She's not looking for discussion.
Okay.
So, I'm just making the motion now to pay the fully Mansfield bill.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll support the motion. Oliver supports.
Uh, we already had a motion, Mr. Oliver.
Yeah, he's supporting it. Supervisor Dunn?
I'm sorry, what was that?
So, I made the motion to pay the fully Mansfield bill, and Trustee Oliver supported it. So, we're just gonna call the roll to pay the fully Mansfield bill.
Okay. Very good.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
No.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a statement, please?
It's highly irregular. Can it wait till you-
Well, usually, there's a discussion on the motion.
I'll, I'll just, I'll, I'll address it later. Okay. Next, we have approval of the previous meeting minutes, those being from May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Madam Chair, the, the meeting minutes are from June tenth, two thousand twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
And I will make a motion that we approve as presented.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support by Nevers.
Reported by-
Support by-
Supported by-
Support by-
Supported by-
Support by-
Supported by-
Support by-
Support by-
Support by-
Would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you. We will have the consent agenda items. These are routine matters that come before the board on a regular basis, but if you wish to discuss an item, please indicate so at this time. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Nope, that's all right. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Clerk Posey, support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to approve the consent. Would you call the roll?
Yes. Clerk, um, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you. We will have the consent agenda items. These are routine matters that come before the board on a regular basis, but if you wish to discuss an item, please indicate so at this time. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Nope, that's all right. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Clerk Posey, support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to approve the consent. Would you call the roll?
Yes. Clerk, um, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. And now, we have the closed session meeting minutes from the same meeting?
Yes. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from June tenth, two thousand twenty.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support by-
Support by Goodhue.
Order by Ms. Goodhue to approve the closed session meeting. Would you call the roll, please?
Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you. We will have the consent agenda items. These are routine matters that come before the board on a regular basis, but if you wish to discuss an item, please indicate so at this time. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Nope, that's all right. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Clerk Posey, support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to approve the consent. Would you call the roll, please?
Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you. We will have the consent agenda items. These are routine matters that come before the board on a regular basis, but if you wish to discuss an item, please indicate so at this time. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Nope, that's all right. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Clerk Posey, support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to approve the consent. Would you call the roll?
Yes. Clerk, um, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. We will have the consent agenda items. These are routine matters that come before the board on a regular basis, but if you wish to discuss an item, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Nope, that's all right. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Clerk Posey, support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to approve the consent. Would you call the roll?
Yes. Clerk, um, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you. We will have the consent agenda items. These are routine matters that come before the board on a regular basis, but if you wish to discuss an item, please indicate so at this time. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Nope, that's all right. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Clerk Posey, support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to approve the consent. Would you call the roll?
Yes. Clerk, um, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. That's to have public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand, and remember, there's a three-minute time limit.
Okay, first up, we have Mr. Bucci. Um, go ahead. Mr. Bucci? Oh, he put his hand, he put, he put his hand down. Okay, next, we have Mr. Grabow. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Mark Grabow. My address is on file with the clerk here in the township. This evening, I'd like to speak concerning an issue that I came across, and I'm gonna request that the board make an immediate investigation into the funds and the safety issues that are occurring within the township. There are subdivisions that are currently having sidewalk replacements done. These sidewalk replacements are not effectively being handled correctly or legally. These sidewalks that are being replaced actually have a violation under the ADA requirements. I'm requesting that the board immediately suspend any and all payments to the contractor and the department head that is responsible for these projects be brought in, reviewed, and we get an explanation why we are allowing non-compliance through these programs. This is a safety requirement. This is a law. The law has now been violated, and I'm requesting an immediate investigation with immediate reactions and that these sidewalks be stopped and the program be investigated for compliance. I am open for contact so that we can get this done. I found this during walking those areas and leaving signs for constituents that had requested it, and I'm appalled that our folks here are allowing this to happen. We have a contract, and the contract is very clear. So, we have a safety issue, let's get it together. I'm appalled that the, the township is allowing this to occur. Each and every one of the board members knows how to reach me, so feel free to email me. I will send you pictures. This is not a game. This is not a hoax. This is brand-new, fresh concrete that has been put in within the last thirty days. I thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you very much.
Um, next, we have phone number ending in zero six six seven. Go ahead.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, uh, my name's Louis Caligatis. Uh, I'm calling in from four IP, and there was, uh, an agenda item added in reference to, uh, some assessment software, um, that, I'm just calling in just to explain that, um, the software that was installed was, uh, was non-evasive. It was just to do a discovery and understand the health of the, uh, the IT and technology infrastructure that's at the township. Um, and quite frankly, there ever, there was no credentials that were put into the software to do any of the assessment, therefore, there was really no data that ever came back. Um, typically, some, be, this, a lot of this equipment, um, has a manufacturer's default, uh, REIT account, and tho- those REIT accounts were disabled on all the infrastructure, and, uh, and, and the only point or the only reason that it was, it was done was to, uh, to find out, you know, the health, the performance, and also any maintenance status, uh, with the infrastructure that's in, in, in the township. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I think I was muted. Uh, next, we have, uh, phone number ending in one one two zero. Go ahead.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. This is trustee candidate John Parkinson. My address is on file at the clerk's office. Tonight, I wanted to address, first, I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Dunn for allowing me my three minutes at the last meeting, uh, when I couldn't chime in during public comments, and I chimed in during the, um, public hearing. So, I wanted to say thank you for allowing me my three minutes. Tonight, I wanted to address the new scandal, but before I do, I wanted to ask the clerk, Clerk Posey, to consider recusing herself from voting on item number twelve on tonight's agenda. I have been vocal about the close personal friendship you and Chief Phillips have. You yourself, during one board meeting, have not denied it. In fact, in the future, you should recuse yourself from voting on any fire department-related items or Chief Phillips requests that come before the board. Now, let's talk about the elephant in the room. No wonder you and so many have not bothered to address the ethics board and put it into, into the, onto the agenda. Malicious software on your computer had sent voter information to another country, Canada. Clerk Posey, I will not accuse you of putting that unauthorized malicious software on your computer. However, it has been there for a great amount of time, since June of two thousand eighteen and detected on, in October of two thousand eighteen. Can you tell the residents, myself included, that for three months, you did not notice there was different software on your computer? Why do you and the rest of the board choose not to listen to trustee Bussinow? This is a serious issue, and as a resident, I demand an investigation by the Justice Department. You have covered Janet Dunn's transgressions by not informing the residents in which you serve. This issue, too, was brought to Janet Dunn, according to the Loudermill hearing, and she has done nothing to protect the residents. Janet Dunn wanted to let it go so that it wouldn't upset you, the clerk. Why would addressing malicious soft, malicious software that gathers data from the residents of McComb Township and send it to another country upset you? Clerk Posey, did you install this software? Did you know it was there? We, the people of McComb Township, deserve the truth. We deserve better. We demand better. Residents, remember, August fourth. Parkinson for trustee, working for a better McComb. I yield the floor.
Okay, next, we have, uh, Mr. Nicodinos. Go ahead.
Hi, yes, I would like to talk about agenda fourteen A tonight. Who is for it? Who is off it? Why was unauthorized software installed on the clerk's computer? Why is this information being given to a company in Toronto, Canada? What is the company in Canada doing with this information? Who authorized this to be installed on the clerk's desktop? What other information is the township leaking out to third-party vendors without our knowledge? Why is there no investigation on why this happened? Why was the clerk not transparent on this issue? Is this another reason why the ethics ordinance continues to get delayed? Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Okay, next, we have Mr. Cusmano. Go ahead.
Frank Cusmano, one six one eight eight, Jenny Drive. I'm not going to bother, um, making statements, pose these questions. I will state facts.
Malicious software on your computer had sent voter information to another country, Canada. Clerk Posey, I will not accuse you of putting that unauthorized malicious software on your computer. However, it has been there for a great amount of time, since June of 2018 and detected in October of 2018. Can you tell the residents, myself included, that for three months you did not notice there was different software on your computer? Why do you and the rest of the board choose not to listen to trustee Bossenow? This is a serious issue, and as a resident, I demand an investigation by the Justice Department. You have covered Janet Dunn's transgressions by not informing the residents in which you serve. This issue too was brought to Janet Dunn, according to the Loudmills hearing, and she has done nothing to protect the residents. Janet Dunn wanted to let it go so that it wouldn't upset you, the clerk. Why would addressing malicious software that gathers data from the residents of Macomb Township and send it to another country upset you? Clerk Posey, did you install this software? Did you know it was there? We, the people of Macomb Township, deserve the truth. We deserve better. We demand better. Residents, remember, August 4th. Parkinson for trustee, working for a better Macomb. I yield the floor.
Okay, next we have Mr. Nikodinos. Go ahead.
Hi, yes, I would like to talk about Agenda 14A tonight. Who is for it? Who is off it? Why was unauthorized software installed on the clerk's computer? Why is this information being given to a company in Toronto, Canada? What is the company in Canada doing with this information? Who authorized this to be installed on the clerk's desktop? What other information is the township leaking out to third-party vendors without our knowledge? Why is there no investigation on why this happened? Why was the clerk not transparent on this? Is this another reason why the ethics ordinance continues to get delayed? Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Okay, next we have Mr. Cusamano. Go ahead.
Frank Cusamano, 16188 Jenny Drive. I'm not going to bother making statements, pose these questions. I will state facts. The Macomb Daily Report that executive Mark Tackle had announced that he was not seeking renewal of the declaration of emergency for the county. I'm curious when, and I'm sure other residents are curious, when the emergency declaration will end with the township, and why it isn't being ended sooner than later, and whether or not it's being used as an excuse not to deal with the ethics ordinance issue, specifically putting the board in place. Now, I also want to state, does anyone care that these agendas are being done ad hoc by the Board of Trustees? There's no formal resolution, apparently, by the board, as to the procedures and protocols of the Open Meetings Act is to be conducted for the board meetings. Please adopt an ordinance that sets forth the rules and protocols and guidelines for meetings. If you need to look, I was up for litigation with the city of Livonia, and they have it in their ordinance. There should be an ordinance in Macomb Township. Now, the issue of the no-bid award to the waste hauling contract, a lot of this is common sense, and I have to take a little bit of my time from my busy day in order to find law on it. But there's a case from 1868 which sets forth a no-bid paving contract in the city of Detroit. And what it said, and I'm going to read it to the Board because I think it's important because it shows the amount of power that the public body has. "The city council under the charter is not a private agent. It is a public body called with larger powers involving discretion and responsibility. When called with the power, all the methods of its exercise, as well as the option to exercise it or not, are in great measure left to its own wise discretion. Where a rule or mode of exercise is prescribed, then, of course, it must be followed. But beyond this, modes, occasions, and extent of exercise are left to the wise judgment and discretion of the council." The ordinance said that there had to be sealed bidding process for the waste hauling contract procedures. It wasn't done. Now, Dino Buchi did the same thing. He got a great deal, it was really cheap rate, but at what cost? Couldn't there have been a six-month extension or a shorter extension with GFL? And this is not fair to GFL because under the case I just told you about, this Hobart versus the city of Detroit, the entire contract could be declared void before not following the procedure authorized under the ordinance. And I just want to make-
Please crash it up, Mr. Smarto.
I'm wrapping it up right now, Madam Chair. Thank you. I'm very concerned about the ethics ordinance not being placed on the previous agendas. Thank you, I yield the floor back. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. Thank you.
Next we have Charles Niffick. Go ahead.
Hi, yeah, this is Charles T. Niffick, 1684 Kennet. I've been campaigning now for about two weeks, and I wanted to say thanks for the assigned ordinance being waived last meeting. A common theme with our residents seems to be, you know, our never-ending history of corruption, the whole Dino Buchi era, the lack of transparency, the lack of accountability, which ultimately results in a lack of honesty, to be quite frank. Now, we have some type of a situation here where we have unauthorized access, which resulted in a data breach going back to June of 2018 when it was installed, and then, of course, it was detected in October of 2018. And it was of such concern that the BPI said it was of high concern. I'm just kind of hoping that, you know, we're going to find out, you know, what happened with all of this. And, you know, I always go back to, you know, when I was a lot younger, we used to watch Saturday Night Live, there was a character called Roseanne, Roseanne Adana, and her famous line was, "It's always something." And unfortunately, with Macomb Township, it's always something, and it's never positive. It's always negative, and this corruption thing just continues and continues. So, I'm kind of hoping we can kind of figure out what's going on with this IT breach. And that's basically it for tonight. Thank you so much.
Okay, next is Mr. Kurt Broadbridge. Go ahead. Kurt Broadbridge, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, folks. Good evening, board members and residents. My name is Kurt Broadbridge, 45619 Thorn Tree Lane. I didn't plan on speaking this evening, but as a technology professional with over 30 years of experience, I'd like to take this opportunity to encourage the board to proceed with the information security audit and assessment of all the servers and computers. While it may sound like an expensive proposition, I can only say that the cost of any type of data breach or unauthorized exploitation, that is, transfer of data off-net, could be exponentially more expensive. There are security standards that must be adhered to. Data is currency, and privacy is a primary concern to everyone. I'm certain that most residents expect that their data is being safeguarded and not released unless permitted under the law. Additionally, it may be valuable for the township to consider evaluating additional tools that could help monitor and prevent data loss. We live in a world where the number of bits and bytes is quickly eclipsing the number of atoms, and we need to ensure that data is protected from both internal and external threats. To our township residents, safeguard your data. Understand the policies of those who have access to your data. And if you ever suspect abuse or breach of that data, make sure that the leadership team is committed to getting to the bottom of this. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next we have Mr. Tom Sokol. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Tom Sokol, good evening. My address is on file with the clerk's office. I also want to piggyback off of what Kurt Broadbridge said on the issue of IT security. I don't know who Mr. Telegatus is, but on a quick internet search, his business's mailing address was to a Coney Island in Marysville, Michigan. And so, my question is, who authorizes this work to be done on the clerk's workstation? I know Mr. Broadbridge's business, if you Google it, is it going to be to a Coney Island in Marysville? I know BPI's mailing address that services municipalities across our county is not going to be to a Coney Island in Marysville. And they expressed very serious concern that there was a security breach here. And whatever was attempted to be articulated tonight, there was data being collected, whether they were scanning ports, whether they were testing our system, data was being collected. And it was suppressed. It was brought to the supervisor's attention. It was brought up at the Loudmill, and that's why it's coming up now. The clerk and our supporters will attempt to say that it's politics, it's election season, but we heard the same thing with Clifford Fritus. We heard the same thing with Dino Buchi. We've heard the same thing with Kwame Kilpatrick. And the one thing that the timing of the election cannot change is the truth, the truth of what happened. And we can buy big signs with big pictures, we can buy electric billboards, but it's not going to change the fact that the trust of the residents has been broken, and it won't change the fact that the truth is being attempted to be suppressed, and we need to have an investigation of what exactly took place and why, and who authorized it. And every employee that works for a company right now, and I'm sure the township is included, knows that you just can't install software that's unauthorized on your computer. So, I look forward to what this investigation says. Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Lisa Nash. Go ahead.
Oh, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you can.
Hi, this is Lisa Nash. My address is on file. I would like to continue on the topic that Mr. Cusamano brought up this evening around the waste hauler contract and the three-year renewal that occurred on the last meeting. So, I am in complete agreement that this is not a reflection of the incumbent as much as it is having transparency and integrity in the process. So, the previous agreement that they won was done under false pretenses, and my question to the waste hauler committee this evening is, can you unequivocally say that the bid process was followed with the original award, meaning that it was a sealed bid that was opened in Town Hall? It is my understanding that that did not happen, and for that reason alone, I feel that it is owed to the residents to go through a transparent and fair process that follows the ordinance that requires that to go out to bid. So, I wanted to make a point about that that also follows to my next topic, which means on the same line of a contract renewal, BPI is coming up for renewal again. It keeps getting rolled over. It becomes a hot topic. We keep being told that it's too late to make a bid for it, and we need to just renew it and roll it over. I'm seeing a common theme here, and I'd like to ask the board this evening to start the preparations to have the BPI bid go out. And this is a perfect example. The data breach that has allegedly occurred, don't we rely on them to help us with that? We pay them a pretty hefty sum every month, and I would think that data security is part of their responsibility. And the largest global companies in the world have data breaches, and what they do with that is learn from it, install tools to make sure it doesn't happen again. I, my company, we get, we have phishing that happens, we have malware that's loaded because we inadvertently clicked something, but we have an IT department that helps to stop guard that. So, I just wanted to raise these topics tonight. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope you have a great evening.
There are no other residents that have their hand raised, Madam Supervisor. Oh, wait, somebody, I think somebody. Uh, yes, Mr. Benedict Sola. Sorry if I pronounced your name wrong. Go ahead.
Hi, hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello? Hello?
Hello? Hello? Yes, we can hear you, sir. You can hear us.
Hello?
Please go ahead, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry you can hear me. Okay. I can't hear you guys. Hey, this is Ben Solly. I'm in Chelsea Park subdivision. I want to, I guess, I want to present to you a topic that I'd like to get an appointment on for a future meeting so I could take you guys through a virtual tour of the PowerPoint of our subdivision so you could see what we deal with every day. Our streets, they're 19 years old approximately. They're in terrible condition. Like Mr. Gravow's sidewalk statement earlier, there must have been a noncompliance situation earlier on with the specifications that the concrete that was used in our subdivision were poured to. I've spoken with township engineering, I've spoken with the road commission. The feedback we've got is we can plead for participation in a sad program. We're not content with that in Chelsea Park subdivision. We don't want to pay $17,000 per house for you guys, well, you, not you, the road commissioner to come out and repour cement and do it again when it should have been done like the first concrete on a normal compliance with specification should last 35 years. There has to be a business case for the maintenance that's done on these roads just to make them drivable. They're in terrible, terrible condition. So, I am, I'd like to come in. An in-person appointment would be best, but I could do it virtually if you guys allow me to present a PowerPoint. I'd like to make a plea for some help or support for approval on acceptance to a preservation program or the annual subdivision reconstruction program. I'm done. Thank you very much for your time.
We have Brian Michael. Go ahead. Brian Michael, you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Brian Michael, and I reside in Chelsea Park subdivision at 19939 Edinburgh Drive. I live in the residence immediately to the east of Mr. Swab who just spoke. I'm just talking, pardon me, I'm talking to reiterate what Mr. Swab has expressed about the condition of the roads in our neighborhood. Obviously, there's been some sort of a engineering or cement problem that caused the streets to deteriorate to a point where at some intersections, it's almost impassable. I as well would like to see this get on an agenda so that it could be researched further. I would encourage all members and trustees to drive through our neighborhood, take a few minutes, and just ask yourself if this was your neighborhood, would this be acceptable to you? Thank you, and have a great evening.
There are no more residents wishing to speak, Madam Supervisor.
Thank you. I want to just take a minute here since the last couple callers have been on the issue of roads and sidewalks. Mr. Van Tiflin, could you give a very brief rundown on what these homeowners should do as far as getting their road repaired or their sidewalk repaired?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, as far as the roads go, we've actually been working with the residents in that subdivision. They were into us a couple of years ago for a special assessment district. I believe that was mentioned by one of the gentlemen that spoke. Unfortunately, they were not able to get all the signatures that were necessary in order to have that special assessment district go through. Program that was mentioned was the pavement preservation program for subdivisions, and essentially what happens is the county picks up half the tab, but the residents would pick up the other half of the cost. The township doesn't have a source for, source of income for road repair. So, to this point, any road work that's done is done through the special assessment project.
Thank you for your explanation. Since there are no more comments, we will move on to new business. And the first one is a water and sewer request to approve contractor's application for payment number three for 23-mile road water main replacement. Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and board members. Can everyone hear me okay, please?
Yes, you can.
Yes. Tonight, Water and Sewers in front of you requesting approval to pay cert number three. This will be payable to LD Agustinian Sons in the amount of $32,428.77. Water and Sewers, well, as engineer, has reviewed this, and we are recommending we move forward. As everyone's aware, this is the project that took place on 23-mile road made in the Card Road area this past winter. Be happy to answer any questions and recommending we move forward. Thank you.
Any board members have a question?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the contractor's application for payment number three, Macomb Township 23-mile road water main replacement by LD Agustinian Sons in the amount of $32,428.77.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support by Never.
Supported by Ms. Never to approve payment number three as requested. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Never?
Yes.
Trustee Bossenow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. Next, we have a request to approve the engagement letter to update the five-year financial projection and one-year rate design for the water and sewer department by Utility Financial Solutions LLC. Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and board members. Water and Sewers in front of you tonight requesting approval to sign this letter of engagement. Utility Financial Solutions is the same company that we've been using the last few years. They help us with our financial projections and outlines as well as a rate recommendation. And I am asking for permission to sign this letter of engagement so we can get this process started. This process will culminate probably late summer, early fall with Dawn Lund giving a presentation on her recommendation to the board. Be happy to answer any questions, please.
Thank you.
Please.
Any question?
Mr. Wanglin, this is Karen Goodhue. In scanning through here, is it $7,500 for two different things here?
That is correct.
The financial plan update? Okay. Just because it wasn't spelled out in the motion. Okay. So, amounts to $1,500?
Yes, $15,000.
Oh, $15,000, I'm sorry. Yeah. Forgot a zero there. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, Trustee Oliver. I move we approve that we sign the engagement letter for a five-year financial projection update.
Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Support by Never.
Supported by Ms. Never to approve the engagement letter as requested. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Never?
Yes.
Trustee Bossenow?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries also. Number eight is a request for approval to award the contract to Paymar Enterprises Incorporated for the Country Club Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you again, board members. Water and Sewers in front of you tonight recommending that we award this project to Paymar Enterprises in the amount of $1,215,389.00. This project was put out to bid with three contractors submitting quotes. We are familiar with all three of these contractors. We did have a meeting with Paymar Enterprises, Water and Sewer did, as well as AW and Mr. Van Tiflin. We are comfortable with them. We feel as though they understand the scope of the work, and we are recommending this letter be awarded to this project tonight. Thank you very much, please.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wanglin?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the request to award the contract to Paymar Enterprises for the Country Club Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $1,215,389.00.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support by Never.
Supported by Ms. Never to award this contract to Paymar Enterprises. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Never?
Yes.
Trustee Bossenow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. The engineering-
Thank you, board.
The engineering department is requesting to award geotechnical services for review of state site condominium sanitary sewer pump station. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, board members. Last year, the township board authorized the engineering department to begin a developer-funded trunk line design for a sanitary sewer pump station that will serve a subdivision in the general area of 24 Mile and Roman Flank. That design has reached a point where we need to get the geotechnical investigation work completed. That was included in the amount that the developer deposited with the township. We've obtained the proposal from Intertec PSI that is included in your board packet. That quote is $7,700. We've reviewed the proposal and are recommending approval. I do want to note that this is 100% being funded by the developers, so all $7,700 will come-
hundred dollars will come out of the funds that he has in deposit with the Township. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Van Tiflin?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith. I'll make a request to award the geotechnical services for review of state site condominium sanitary sewer pump station for seven thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Motion by Ms. Smith. Goodhue support. I'm sorry, who was that?
Go ahead, let Mr. Oliver.
Support by Oliver.
I'm sorry, but I still did not understand who made the motion and who seconded it.
Madam Chair, Treasurer, Trustee Smith made the motion and Trustee Oliver supported it.
Thank you very much. Motion by Ms. Smith, seconded by Mr. Oliver to award the geotechnical services as recommended by the township engineer. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have planning and zoning and it's a request to award the master plan update planning services contract. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor and Board. Yes, we are here tonight to request to award the master update to Carlisle Wortman in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand and fifty dollars. Carlisle Wortman is already our in-house planning consultant that helps us on a day-to-day basis. Updating a master plan is something that's very advantageous for the Township and it's actually overdue. Law requires it to be updated every five years. It's a little bit overdue right now. It serves as a policy document for us to look at local zoning ordinances and regulations as well as just in general, the way the Township develops it in the future. And I think it's very timely for us to update it now, not only because it's overdue, but because it's also, it gives us some measurable goals that will develop throughout this for what we want the Township to look like in the future.
Mr. Box, I have a question. How long do you anticipate this to take?
So, we have a four-phase plan, work plan that is in your packet this evening. And the overall timeframe is roughly eight months. Our goal to have a very solid draft by the beginning of October for the board and the community to review. Throughout the process, leading up to that point, we'll also be doing a lot of community engagement, some workshops and public visioning sessions around the community.
Very good. Thank you. Any other board members have questions?
Trustee Oliver has a board question. Mr. Box, we talked earlier on this and I thank you for your help to help you through some questions. But I did not, I forgot to ask you, when do you think they'd be able to start?
So, Carlisle Wortman, as I mentioned, is already our in-house planning consultant that helps us with the site plan reviews and a number of other items on a day-to-day basis. Because we have a good working relationship with them, they've actually already been getting some of the background data, previous plans, master plans from neighboring communities, as well as information from the county. So, I guess really the short answer is they've already begun to start on this.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to award the master plan update planning services contract in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, fifty dollars to Carlisle Wortman.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue. Supported by Mr. Oliver to award the contract as recommended. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. This motion carries. Number eleven is a request to approve a deviation for separation of buildings for five-four-seven-six-three Brenda Drive in Pheasant Run subdivision. Mr. Box, again.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor and Board. Yes, we are here requesting to approve a deviation for separation of buildings to address you just mentioned. This involves a, an outbuilding or a shed that is eight-point-zero-two feet from the main house and the current regulations state ten feet. Actually, the eight-point-two feet would fall in with the eight-foot separation that's being developed in an ordinance that we're trying to amend in another process right now. And this is something that the staff recommend approval of.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions, comments, or motions?
Madam Chair, Clerk Posey will make a motion to approve a deviation for separation of buildings for five-four-seven-six-three Brenda Drive.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Goodhue supports.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to approve this request. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. Next, we have the fire department and they are requesting to approve change order number seven for the new public safety building. Chief Phillips.
Madam Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting this evening as the owner representative for the public safety building, approval of change order number seven, which is for four items, ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-five cents is for item number one and two, which is undercut for the building and undercut for the foundation. When they were preparing for the foundation for the two-story portion of the building that's currently being built, they discovered some poor soil conditions in the area where the fuel and gas tanks were located approximately thirty years ago that required some additional material to be removed. The Township's third-party testing consultant reviewed it along with, the Township and the contractor, Burnco, all agreed that the material had to come out. The undercut was performed. As I indicated, that amount is ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-five cents. The third item is to apply the epoxy floor to the restroom in the apparatus bay that matches the rest of that building. And item four is for the temporary power to the trailer that's serving as the temporary living quarters for the full-time firefighters that are working at Station One on their twenty-four-hour shifts. So, with that, the total is seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars, forty-five cents. If approved, it will come out of the contingency line item and the total project amount will not be impacted or changed. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Chief Phillips?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order number seven in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-five cents.
Supported by Smith.
Motion by Oliver.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Supported by Nevers. Ms. Smith and Mr. Oliver both approved, seconded it, so.
It was, it was Ms. Smith that made the motion.
Motion by Ms. Motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Mr. Oliver to approve the change order as submitted. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you. From the clerk's office, we have a request to adjust the election inspector compensation. Ms. Posey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Madam Chair, the large increase in voter turnout, new laws, procedures in the COVID-19 pandemic have made the job of election inspectors more challenging than ever. Passage of proposal eighteen-three gave every Michigan voter the right to vote by mail. With over a month before the primary election, my office has already assigned more mail-in ballots to voters than the combined absent voter and in-person voting at the August 2016 primary election. As a result, we need more workers to assist with mail-in ballot counting and at the polls. Elections are the foundation of our democracy and we cannot have successful elections without our election inspectors. Election inspector pay rates were last increased in 2015. In recognition of the increased workload, training, and expectations amid a pandemic, increasing the pay for election inspectors is warranted at this time and budgeted for. I'm asking for the board to approve an adjustment in the election inspector compensation as recommended. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Posey, what is the additional compensation, if you may please?
It's approximately twenty-five dollars to each position.
Each position, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, this is Clerk Smith, Clerk Smith, I'm sorry, this is Clerk, Trustee Smith. I will make that motion, the request to adjust the election inspector compensation.
And I will support that. This is Nevers.
Motion by Ms. Nevers. Seconded by, seconded by Nevers. Who?
Motion by Smith, seconded by Nevers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion was by Ms. Smith and seconded by Ms. Nevers to adjust the election inspector compensation. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have the add-on for McComb Corners Park concessions. Mr. DiCaro, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board members. The Parks and Recreation Department's requesting permission to enter into contract for concessionaire services at McComb Corners Park. We placed it on mitten and received one bid. At this time, we're recommending to contract with Scoop and Twist of McComb LLC to provide concessionaire services to the park for eight hundred dollars per month. Scoop and Twist has been our concessionaire for the past two years. They are a local business in McComb Township and we are very pleased with their performance. I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. DiCaro?
Trustee Oliver, just got one quick, quick one. Mr. DiCaro, when are they going to start?
Well, the, both the Little League and the Girls' Softball League have canceled through until July twentieth, so we were going to wait, but we just found out that a lot of set teams are starting to rent the park for games for every Tuesday, and we have a tournament coming up. So, they'll probably be starting next Tuesday if this passes. Good. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, I will, I'll make the motion that we award the McComb Corners Park concessions to Scoop and Twist.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support by Oliver.
Support by Nevers.
Supported by Mr. Oliver to approve the agreement or contract with Scoop and Twist of McComb LLC. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Ms. Posey, would you kindly read the add-on for two A?
Yes, Madam Chair. The add-on was discussion and vote to hire an independent IT consulting firm to perform an audit of the unauthorized computer program that was installed on the workstation of the Township clerk.
Thank you. But this was added on, there is no paperwork for it, so whoever asked for it to be added on, would you please explain?
Yes, Madam Chair. As I said, I sent the agenda item yesterday. I told the board on June twenty-second that I was going to make a request of this nature. It, June twenty-second is the same day that fourteen, the add-on that was just read was actually presented to the board. I, I think there's a lot of paperwork in the past in the email that you have received about case what the issue is, and I kind of revisited that in an email to the board on Monday. And all are aware that the reason I revisited this is because this was brought up at the lot of our hearing by our Township's attorney that there is a refusal, I think from your department, to actually address this issue. And I just want to say that it's been past practice of this board, we're day jokers to help analyze Township issues, including in 2017 when the board, when the board voted to approve an outside auditor to examine our bid processes. To be honest, that audit has developed into a very good situation for the Township as our current purchasing specialist, Ms. Solomon, is doing a wonderful job, in my opinion. In 2018, the board approved to hire an IT review audit, I hope I'm saying that correctly, we engaged plant Moran in that process. And in 2019, this board voted to approve an independent attorney to review the handling of an HR issue. And actually, those findings came back to where they didn't find them. So, I'm not sure where an independent audit would go. But I can tell you that probably the technology concerns about exactly what a program does when it stands forth, collects that data, sends it to a sewer in Windsor, Ontario, is, you know, that's probably something I need even more explanation. I still don't, as a trustee, understand exactly what data might have been passed on. But I can tell you that in responding to our questions, I think DPI did their job of reporting this to the supervisor's office. And one thing that, there's been some inconsistent statements that I had to point out by DPI, but one thing that has been very consistent since October of 2018 is the inability to really actually pinpoint how this got installed on a workstation in a Township. And I just want to read what one of the answers- on a workstation in a township. And I just wanna read what one of the answers that Ms. Case put out. I don't think everybody on the board knew all this, because it was not addressed to everybody. But, um, she explained why the type of activity was considered a threat to township's IT environment. She said the required protocol for installing new software at the township requires a change management ticket, ticket is open, change management ticket. It is reviewed by a DPI system engineer and a project charter, including tickets, and they are created. This protocol was not followed when the software was installed. Moreover, when they contacted Ovic, which is a reputable program, but it can be used for non-reputable purposes, the manufacturer of the software, uh, DPI was informed that the installation of the software was registered by a company called Forit. Some of this occurred tonight. We were unfamiliar with this company and did not believe they had any affiliation with the township. From a Google search, we found Forit had a website. It was represented on the site that Forit was a managed service provider, but the address listed to this company was a Coney Island restaurant located in Marysville. Couple of the fact that we had no knowledge while the installation took place, this raised red flags. Therefore, as I stated in my email to Supervisor Dunn, we were concerned about the integrity of the information systems. She has repeated this sentiment in other- responding to other questions, that as I explained above, the manner in which the installation had occurred, and not knowing by whom it was installed, was the concern. I have seen nothing that that question's been answered about, you know, this could have been done remotely. It's not a virus, it- it's- it's, um, not malware. Um, and when Ovic was called, they said that the working was Forit. I believe in the email from October two thousand eighteen, said that Forit said that they were working with the township to- to put this on the system. That is a lot of questions in and of itself. The technology part, I cannot say for certain what data the program would be looking for when it was knocking on open doors in Forit, I think is- is Ms., um, Ms. Case had put it to us. But here's an issue. The reason I want an independent auditor is I don't want our IT consultant to have to fear like they have to frame a narrative simply because it is an election, to be quite honest. And- and I don't want them to be afraid of repercussions. I do have contracts, um, in- in other places. This is the main reason I wanna go to an independent auditor. Um, they may find nothing. Like I said, when we've done this process before, I would say it probably produced a positive result, more so than a negative in our township. Um, I just wanna address the timing, too. I did not hear about this until April twenty-ninth at the Lauderdale. Um, based on reactions, I don't know the right time to- to bring it up. Um, we have a primary in August, and we have a agenda in November. Um, does that mean I can't ask about it till December? And, uh, that would be really odd. So I just wanna make sure, um, that, you know, that we're comfortable with data. I do know that if we, um, one thing I have learned in my research, that if that program, even if it had access to a port that had citizens' credit card numbers on it, that there is a report that has to be done, and, uh, under federal- federal guidelines, that we are supposed to report that- that breach. So I- those are the kind of things I'm looking for. What did that- when they were sending ports, did they even have- did they find an open door anywhere to where it might have- have credit card numbers? And, um, I am not a- I do not have a PhD in technology, but I'm a board member, and I think everybody understands what's at stake here. And again, we went through this audit process before, I'll say it one more time. It's usually produced positive results for the township when they've done it. So this is why I am suggesting to make this motion to pursue an- an audit of this situation.
Anyone else have a question?
Madam Chair, I'd like for Beth Case. Oh, go ahead, Nancy.
I was- I was just gonna make a statement here. Um, this is concerning to me because clearly this issue could be one of cyber security, and most importantly, Tim just mentioned the, um, integrity of the township's information regarding, uh, credit cards. And, uh, and again, how did this get on there? Um, just, uh, numerous questions on that. And I think forensic investigation would be the way to go. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I would like to address Beth Case. Are you on the line?
Yes.
Um, Beth, I would like it to be read into the record, the email that you sent to the entire board, uh, following Mr. Bussinow's request to have this agenda item put on. Um, if you have it with you, I would like for you to read it. If not, I will read it for you. But I think it's important that all the information is shared that has been, um, given, and, um, your response to his request would be, I would like to have it in the record, please. So do you have that information, or would you like for me to read it?
No, I have it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I am writing to follow up on the correct questions surrounding a two thousand eighteen incident of the unauthorized installation of software on a township's computer. I want to share the incident report we created when the ticket was initiated, to answer the question. Specifically, what was installed, and did it compromise network security or expose the township's data? It is best to start by directing your attention to the conclusion of the attached incident report. Notification from a township employee that a website does not have access indicated the investigation. When concluding the service work, we discovered that a software package, Ovic, had been installed. We used Ovic as a remote monitoring tool, and as the township's network administrator, we needed to know how the software was being used, who was using it, and how it was installed. Although the software is not malicious, it requires privileged township credentials to install. DPI does not work with Ovic, and we did not install the software. Ultimately, our investigation determined that software did not create a threat. Ovic Networks Incorporated is a well-established company in the computer industry. The Ovic application, the remote monitoring tool, uses data information about a network's health and performance. It communicates basically routers, firewalls, servers, printers, et cetera. The information is then filtered and summarized on time that service technicians can use to make changes and improve a network's performance and reliability. The Ovic software does not interact with corporate data. It only communicates with network devices. The original incident report from October of two thousand eighteen is attached for your review. Again, based on the original investigation in the incident report, there was no reasonable concern that the network or its data were compromised.
Beth Case, there's been mentioned now several times that there was a data breach, so that is non-factual, correct?
Correct. No information was compromised or- the Ovic software does not interrupt- interact with corporate data.
Right. They've also indicated there was, um, concern for cyber security. There's no reason for concern on that, correct?
Correct.
Also, it's been made mention and sensationalized that credit card information was, uh, could potentially been jeopardized. Is- is that factual at all?
No, it is not.
Okay. So, um, overall, I'll, um, I'll be really clear. Um, the IT contract was up in two thousand eighteen. I was being told over and over again that DPI was overcharging and underserving. I knew someone in the IT industry and asked how I could better educate myself in it to- to find out if this was at all factual. The software was suggested- that was suggested would allow me to verify the network's health and performance, which is a large part of the contract. I did further research to ensure no data would be compromised and no breach of information. I was doing my due diligence and researching if our IT company was performing the necessary maintenance per the contract prior to voting to extend a one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar contract. The, uh, software would suggest if there were improvements that needed to be made, if in fact IT was performing the maintenance required, and that's it. So I believe that, um, in two thousand eighteen, uh, Ms. Case, uh, did look into it. Um, she found that there was nothing to be alarmed about. I, and in fact, the employee, there was the employee that requested the ticket to, uh, check my computer. So I'm pretty sure if I was, um, maliciously putting something on my computer, I wouldn't have been the employee that asked for, um, IT to come and fix my computer with it on there. Um, so I, um, believe that it- it is being really sensationalized, and, uh, absolutely nothing with regards to voter's information can be even remotely jeopardized, because that software is maintained by the state of Michigan. So, um, also, in two thousand eighteen, Ms. Case, who was in the meeting that you had with regard to the incident report?
Um, Supervisor Dunn and Tom Authority.
And then when you reported back that you found that the results were, um, not to be a threat, was the supervisor satisfied with that answer?
Um, we actually, um, I was actually asked subsequent to provide, um, the information in the incident response report to an independent, um, cybersecurity company for evaluation.
So did you then, um, proceed with an independent cybersecurity company?
I did.
Okay. Did you- did you find any different information?
I- not- not that was- no, not that was shared with me.
Okay. So in two thousand and eighteen, uh, the supervisor, after, um, you as an expert had indicated there was no reason for concern, and then you went further to do another, uh, review and found no reason to be concerned, um, it's now being brought up in two thousand twenty, two years later, as a reason for concern. Am I understanding that timeline correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
So I have a question, just to clarify. Ms. Posey, did you ask to have that software installed then?
I didn't.
I- you didn't, or did?
I put the software on so that I could review the maintenance of the equipment.
Okay. And no one knew about that but yourself?
Well, I couldn't very well ask the company that I was trying to see if they were doing their job, if they would allow me to review it.
But did you ask- did you run it by the supervisor first?
No, I did not.
Okay. I guess I'm just concerned because I take great care in trying to protect information, because I have banking information. And I take great care to, uh, make sure that everything is safe, and, um, I'm concerned that somebody could come in and put something on my computer, I guess. So that- that's my only concern, and without anybody else knowing about it.
Well, here's great news, Ms. Goodhue. The actual, um, software that was tried to be installed was- did it work, because we- they do- DPI did have, um, the protection and firewalls in place, so I didn't get any information. But I would never install something that I thought would, um, jeopardize any type of data or information. I'm smarter than that, and I, uh, was doing my due diligence to ensure that I was voting on a contract, um, in almost two hundred thousand dollars a year, and making sure that they were doing the work. Because repeatedly, there have been complaints. However, it appears that they did the job. So I too take, uh, great pride and any concern with people's information. It wouldn't do anything to jeopardize it.
Well, that's good to know.
But I do wanna do my due diligence on a contract. I would encourage all the trustees to do that.
Um, Ms. Case?
Yes.
Are you still there?
I am.
Beth, this is Supervisor Dunn. After this- after this incident, and you and I were, um, talking, and I believe you were here, you might have been on the phone, but I don't think you were here. You and I were talking about this incident, and my question to you at that point was, was the township ever in any- any danger of being corrupted, or someone being able to take information and use it to their own advantage? And you- you assured me that that was not the case. Do you remember that?
Yes, I do. In fact, your question to me was on a scale of one to ten. Um, so, um, if- if I could make it absolutely clear, um, I never said this software was malicious. And I knew it to have no access to corporate data. My concern was as a- I was a network administrator and had that responsibility, and I was not aware of it. So we had to- we had to look into it. But we knew the software, it has a good reputation. And as I mentioned- as I mentioned earlier, um, the Ovic software does not interact with corporate data. We- we- I know Ovic, I'm familiar with it, and I knew it didn't interact with corporate data. And I never said this software was malicious.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Bussinow. I- I just wanna follow up with a few things, 'cause I- I've spent more than five minutes in, and so as a trustee, I've definitely, um, done some homework here. I asked a lot of questions, called a lot of people. Again, I'm not an expert, but the reason that that work ticket was created because QVF software, quote, was Bob asked me for assistance in troubleshooting on Christie of getting kicked off QVF software. And I talked about, I thought she told me, that there was software- QVF is a software program. This is- this is why I'm on an outside audit, 'cause I'm starting to get different answers than what I got, that it's software from the state that was protecting voter data, and there was something on Christie's computer that QV- the QVF software was seen as, um, a reason to- to interrupt all the actions of the org's decision. This is what I was told when I talked about last week. Now, when we go back to the email, the software is standing ports, sending results to an external web porter in, uh, Ontario, Canada. The activity is of high concern and considered a threat to the township's information systems. In the DPI report, they also said that, um, this type of activity- activity is considered a threat to the township's IT environment. Um, so what is a threat, then? Not malicious, but what is the threat? And the other thing is, in this email to you, said we contacted Ovic, and it confirmed a local company called Forit installed the software from the Combs Township. It's not a threat that Ms. Posey did this with a safeguard. So I- this is why I think we need an outside, independent audit. Maybe they find exactly what we're saying.
Trustee Bussinow, I'd like to just comment on that. Um, I would just like to remind you and other board members that I did not vote in favor of the DPI contract. I doubt for one minute, uh, Beth Case is altering her, uh, conclusions to protect me.
I'm saying her answers are inconsistent from emails that she sent in two thousand eighteen to what she told me last week, and they started to change after I sent the email to the board. What are threats, then? What are threats to our IT environment?
This is- this is Beth Case, and all due respect, trustee, I completely disagree with what you just said. And I made a very clear email that I sent today, because I was there today, to try to clarify. If I- if I may, when we talked a couple of weeks ago, one of the things that I assured you, when you asked me about the voter registration, and I actually said, you know, this happened a long time ago, I'm fuzzy on this, I can pull- I can pull the ticket for you. So one of the things that I- I assured you is that if things worked the way they were supposed to, that there was no danger of any voter registration information being-
They worked the way they were supposed to, because the state's- because the state's security software shut the program down, correct?
That's incorrect.
That's why she said the voter information was safe because of state security. The ticket said that the QVR software was interrupting your connections with the network. The QVL, I'm sorry, QV.
That, that could have.
That's what the word ticket said.
That could have been for two reasons. First and foremost, QVF doesn't allow any connection from any device that runs any other application. It just doesn't do that. The other thing that could have caused that was that QVF and the Ovic software were both trying to communicate through the same port.
Let me ask you a question, Beth, since you're answering questions so professionally here. How many municipalities do you get called that a clerk ran software to test to see if your company was doing its job?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
Well, I thought Clerk Posey said the reason that she was running the software was to see if your company was doing its job because she had to renew a big contract. I'm sorry if I heard that wrong, but if I heard that right, how often do you see people install a program of this nature in other municipalities to test your system?
I, I, I have no idea.
Madam Chair, if I may, I would just like to ask kind of a hypothetical question here. If I were suspicious that, and I was doing my due diligence, and I was suspicious that there's this push across the whole nation to do mail-in ballots. And there is a big push also in our township. Not that I'm casting any aspersions on anybody. Hypothetically, if I searched out some kind of a computer program to see if there were any, my words, scooby-doo going on and not telling anybody that I was doing this, would anybody be upset by that? Again, it's hypothetical. You don't have to answer. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to just make a comment on that. Just for your own information, there wasn't a huge push for mail-in ballots in 2018. That's recent. And I do do my due diligence. As Ms. Case has mentioned, Ovic is an extremely respectable computing company in the industry. And I researched them thoroughly before I did anything. And as I've mentioned, it was, the environment here had indicated that BPI was not doing their job. And I, as a trustee, and I would hope any trustee in any community would do the same research. So again, there's no data breach. There was nothing compromised. There was nothing malicious about it. And if it was, I probably wouldn't have left it on my computer for them to find. So that's all I have to say.
And I have one more comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I have one more comment. I'm not, I'm not saying, I mean, with the, how should I put this? With the concern nationwide for this particular election and our existential threat to our stability in this country, if I felt that I needed to do this and go out covertly and do something like that, wouldn't the rest of the trustees here be upset by it? Unless perhaps maybe I went to our supervisor and said, I'm concerned. I'd like to do this. I just want you to know. But for nobody to know it was done, it looks strange. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Bussenow. I just want to know, Ovic is not a cheap program. If it ran from June to October, who paid for that?
It wasn't running.
Until October, they got found that it was running. It was standing ports looking for open doors it was running.
No, I have no, I have no answer for you.
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith. I just have a question off to Ms. Case. And like I said, I have no paperwork regarding this issue. So I'm just listening to what was going on here. But so Ms. Case, you're telling me that whatever Ms. Posey installed, you guys did a background, you checked all that information out. Nothing was breached. That's your professional opinion that nothing was breached regarding cyber, regarding credit cards, software, no breach at all, correct?
That is correct.
And this is what you folks do for a living?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to correct the record. I think Ms. Case sent some paperwork to all of us in an email she just read. I also outlined some concerns. I keep hearing no paperwork, no paperwork. There was paperwork sent to his board. Okay, I just, that's not a factual statement.
Well, Mr. Bussenow, all I had got from you was the one email stating that you'd like to have discussion about it. And I got an email from Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Case, that information. That's all I received. I didn't receive anything about a financial audit.
Well, I had, correct. I had yesterday sent to have this as an add-on so the agenda could get revised. Maybe I'm female, why that stuff did not want to be taken. Because we had an agenda item coming, and I think two, out of the department head meeting on Monday, after I said this was coming. I requested an agenda item Tuesday morning so we could put this in the board packet, just like it was revised Monday. And I was told that I had to do it this task. So that is not on me. I could have given anything we wanted on that agenda item.
Trustee Bussenow, if you want to pull up the procedure for adding an agenda item, you should refresh yourself on that. It indicates that if an add-on needs to be on an agenda for Wednesday, it has to happen on Monday so that we can update the information and provide all the packet information on Mondays, which has been the routine now for four years. So because you wanted to add something on on a Tuesday, just like when Treasurer Goodhue wanted to add something on a Tuesday, she was informed that she needed to add it on at the beginning of the meeting, just as you were.
Well, the reason I waited for Tuesday morning, I let the board know Monday.
Madam Chair, point of order, this has nothing to do with the agenda item.
Well, I can't expla, oh. Okay, okay, if you want to talk about the agenda item and process, I would, I would suggest that you, Clerk Posey, check the protocols for putting computer software on your computers that BPI said you did not follow.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bussenow.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, this is Trustee Smith. Can I ask Ms. Case one more question? I'm sorry. Ms. Case, when you found out this program was installed and you went to our supervisor and Mr. Authority, and you felt comfortable saying that there was no breach whatsoever, and Ms. Dunn was okay with that, and then you, did you run another check to be sure? And if you ran another check today, you would come up with the same information? There would be no difference, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And who, Beth Case, could you just, who has the report? That, your conclusion is, is that the email that we got?
Yes, it was, the document is referred to as an incident response, incident, BPI incident response. It was something that we prepared at the time. And I shared that with Supervisor Dunn and Tom Authority. And then when Mr., when Trustee Bussenow sent his email, I included it.
And you mentioned another audit done. Did you have that report as well?
I, I can, I can everything, hold on a second. I have the, I have a lot of, let me find where it's at. Sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Case, it's hard time hearing you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Is that better?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay. I was asked to provide all of the information that we had, the BPI incident response, and then the other items that were discovered. And forward them, I spoke with somebody named Scott Bailey, who is a managing member of N1 Discovery. And they provide digital forensics and cybersecurity. And I shared all of this with him early, actually, the date on this is December 3rd, 2018.
So forensic was already done?
Yes.
And is the report the same?
I did not, I did not receive a report back from them.
Who requested the audit to them?
You know, I, it was something that Tom Authority gave me the information for. I can't remember exactly if it was in a meeting with Janet or if it was just, if he just sent me, I'm sorry.
And you never received the results to that report?
No, I did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, pardon me, Ms. Case, this is Trustee Bussenow. I just got a question for you. We get a lot of, a lot of these, you know, reports and call-up reports and audits. And the board receives, did you find it strange that the board was, as a whole, was not receiving any of this information that you talk of? And that the majority of this board, I mean, two of these, two of the trustees were not in 2018. So they have no knowledge if we received it or not. And I can tell you, I never received. Didn't you find it strange that the board wasn't talking about it? Or received these reports as a whole?
Trustee Bussenow, all I can say to you on that is my direct, you know, my direct reporter is Janet, and your information is Janet.
Board members. Board members.
And board members?
Board members.
All right.
I would make the recommendation that we deny this request for two reasons. Three, three reasons. It happened two years ago, and nothing has been corrupted in that two years. Number two, the three top officials run the day-to-day operations, and trustees oversee it, but not two years later. Number three, it is an unneeded expense, and I don't even know what it's going to cost. That would be my recommendation to the board at this time.
Is that a form of a motion, Madam Chair?
I will make that as a motion. Yes.
Trustee Oliver will support it. And Madam Chair, so since it's a motion to support, we can open up for more discussion. Madam Chair, this board has not known for two years. This board has not. Ultimately, the bosses, the residents, and if their information was compromised at all. I've been told that even if that software even had the ability to access a credit card network, we should have reported this. Even if it had the ability to access, whether it didn't. We need an outside audit because I think there's going to be an investigation anyway. And that's all I'm going to say on that.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bussenow?
No.
Trustee Nevers?
No.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
No.
Clerk Posey, yes.
That motion carries.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, if I may, never mind, I'll address it later. Go ahead. I apologize.
Whoever is not speaking, turn your microphone off. Whoever is not speaking, turn your microphone off. Thank you. We will now move on to board comments. Mr. Bussenow, you're first. Trustee's comments.
After that, I have absolutely no count of interest.
Thank you. Ms. Nevers? I believe I said all that I needed to say this evening. Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Madam Chair, I am looking, Madam Chair, it's the sound.
Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, I got one thing to say. The Fourth of July holiday is coming up. And I want to remind the residents of the McComb Township about the fireworks ordinance. Because I know people enjoy lighting all fireworks. I do myself. And I like to watch it. But I do want to make a couple of comments about it. The ordinance, the ordinance is, the way it's written, the day before, starting at 8:00 a.m., and going to midnight. The day of, starting at 8:00 a.m. and going to midnight. And the day after, starting at 8:00 a.m. and going to midnight also. You must stop at midnight. That's the important thing. But what I want to stress, especially in the areas of the subdivisions, that we have to be thoughtful of our neighbors. Fireworks are, they're building them bigger and better today. And they're very loud, and they can affect small children. They can affect pets. They can affect the elderly. So we need to be respectful and thoughtful of our neighbors. Other than that, happy Fourth of July, everybody. And be safe and God bless America. That's all I have.
Thank you. Treasurer's comment, this is you.
Yes. July 1st, you should be receiving your summer tax bill. Sometimes we have trouble with the delivery right now with what's going on with the COVID panic. So if you do not get your tax bill in a week after the 1st, please give us a call, and we can find you a new one or send you a new one. Also, I just wanted to make a comment as to why I pulled the Foley Mansfield bill off the bill run. It was not because they didn't do the work. It was a matter of principle that it did not come to the board for approval to hire that firm. And that is exactly why I pulled it. It's not because they did not do the work. Thank you.
Clerk's comment, this is Posey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick update on the election. If you have requested an absent voter ballot, you should have it no later than July 6th. We are anticipating three to six days for delivery. So please return your ballot to the clerk's office as soon as possible. Again, we have some postage-free options located in front of Town Hall. There's a drive-up ballot drop box. And again, there's another one at the Senior Center. Just a reminder, you can, we're also, that we're recruiting election inspectors. And as of this evening, I want to thank the board for approving the increase in compensation for these workers that are willing to work on Election Day for us after a pandemic and during it. There's no experience necessary, and we provide all the training. So please contact the clerk's office if you have college students. If you're off for the summer, currently not working, we would love to have you join our team. Lastly, I just want to finalize. I understand as someone with absolutely no training or experience, it would be complex to understand election security. So I'd like to take a minute to explain it a little bit better. The election software is safeguarded by the state of Michigan. There is extensive mandatory training, safety measures, and credentials certified by the state before you can access the software. And the software is monitored by the state of Michigan. To insinuate anything on my computer can jeopardize voters' information is appalling, but not surprising. It appears some are a part of the efforts to sow seeds of doubt in citizens' faith in our elections by spreading false information about safety, sanctity, and security of our elections. My office is used by the Secretary of State for statewide elections training. And recently, the county clerk stated at a meeting if only all clerks administered elections like McComb Township. We have over 100 years of election experience in my department, and our reputation throughout the county is impeccable. I am personally respected by all clerks in McComb County as I was elected to be the president of the McComb County Clerk Association in 2019. I am extremely passionate about my public service as an elected- I am extremely passionate about my public service as an elected election official. And I will continue to serve the voters and protect the integrity of an election. I know better, I know myself better than anyone else. And yet, some of you expect me to crumble at your words of you and a few friends. I will continue to stand strong and do the job that I was elected to do and take the high road. Your statements are reckless and your constant obsession with me is quite disturbing. And that's all I have to say. Madam Chair, that concluded my comments. Trustee Smith, is it possible for you to check to see if we've lost the? Supervisor?
I'll run over.
Ms. Posey, are you finished?
Yes, I'm done.
I'm sorry, but my connection failed again.
Yep, yep, I'm all, clerk's comments are done.
Okay. My only comment for this evening is I want to thank our new planning director, Josh Box, because at the last meeting, he was charged with trying to accommodate outdoor seating for our restaurants that have been hurting during this COVID virus. I'm happy to say that there are several that are already operational with the restrictions. Some of the restrictions taken off of the outdoor seating. And we will continue working with any restaurants that ask. And we will work with them to get them outdoor seating, if at all possible. Thank you. That's all I have. We have one item to discuss in closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn the closed session?
Karen Goodhue, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support by Nevers.
Seconded by Ms. Nevers to adjourn the closed session. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey? Yes, Supervisor Dunn?
Yes, we are in closed session.
We are back in session. There was one item discussed. Ms. Posey, are there any motions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to direct the fire chief and legal counsel to proceed as discussed.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Supported by.
Support by Nevers.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries. That concludes the business of this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Clerk Posey makes a motion to adjourn.
Support. Support by Goodhue.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Ms. Goodhue to adjourn. Ms. Posey, call the roll.
Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Good evening. Drive safe.